We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. I want to thank everyone for coming. I'm going to ask the clerk to announce the meeting and call the roll.
A notice of special session has been called to be held Thursday, August the 11th, 2016, at 6:00 PM in the Fifth Floor Conference Room for an update on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, followed by an update on the Police and Sheriff's Operational Efficiency Study. Roll call. McKernan.
Here.
Murgia.
Johnson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Markley.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Philbrook.
Here.
Bynum.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
Holland.
Here. Thank you very much. I'll turn it over to Mr. Bach to introduce this presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Commission. Tonight we have two presentations. These are really updates on a couple of the studies that are going on. The second one we'll be doing is really the law enforcement study that we're looking at for police and sheriff department operations. The first presentation we have is our update on the master plan that we're working on for Parks and Recreation Services, which you all directed us to move forward with. And we have our contractor in service for this and is really getting into it. So I'm going to turn this over to Jeremy Rogers, our Parks Director, to lead off on this presentation. Jeremy?
Great. Thank you, Doug. As Doug said, my name's Jeremy Rogers. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director for the Unified Government of Wyandotte County. And I am here to update you on our master plan. Last year about this time in July of 2015, you guys voted to approve the funding for a comprehensive master plan for the Parks and Recreation Department. After the funding was in place, we worked with purchasing to go through the selection process to hire a firm. There were several firms that applied for that. We narrowed it down, did interviews, narrowed it down. And finally, we selected the company of Vario. And I'm going to turn it over to Larry Reynolds from Vario to discuss more with you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. Happy to talk with you about where we're at on the Parks Master Plan. Right now, we are going through our community engagement piece of the project. And recently, last Wednesday and Friday.
Sir, for television, you'll have to talk directly into the microphone.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go. There we go.
So last Wednesday and Friday, we had 12 meetings. Over the course of those two days, we had 48 members show up and participate in the process. They represented various organizations throughout the community. There were also a few residents that showed up as well. These are the questions that we asked, and I'll go through them briefly. We asked if they were residents, how that long they had been a resident. We asked which park they used most. We asked about the future and what, you know, in one word or phrase, what they would like to be able to use, how they would like to be able to describe Wyandotte County Park System. We asked about the best aspects and strengths of the Wyandotte County Parks. We also asked about the weaknesses. We asked what types of recreational program activities would be most important to include in the future. We asked what elements needed improvement. We asked if they felt the community was adequately served by the Parks Department. We asked if they, if there are additional parks or facilities or amenities that should be added. We also asked if there are any that should be eliminated. We asked who folks felt we should be, should be partners of the Parks Department, and if they felt like departments, if the Parks Department is adequately funded. And then if they could, if folks could select one priority for the Wyandotte County Parks Recreation System, we asked what that would be. We'd like to ask you to take the same survey and give us your thoughts, but we've kind of tailored that a little bit differently. And we'd like to hear specifically about your district, the parks that are in your district, what your thoughts are. As we collect all of this information, and we have scheduled a Parks tour that I'd like to schedule with each of you to go to the parks in your district and talk about each of them. And at that time, we will have information that we've heard throughout this process of community engagement. We learned about a few other folks that we should be talking with through last week's meetings. We're reaching out to them now. So as we walk around each park with you all, we'll be able to kind of report on what we've been hearing. And then that, after that process, we'll be able to go to the community with specific questions about various parks. So it is an ongoing process that will extend to July of next year. We'll be looking at a variety of different aspects of the Parks Department. We'll be looking at recreation program services, operations and maintenance. We'll be looking at facilities. Gould Evans will be taking a look at various architectural pieces of the park system. We'll have a visioning workshop with Parks and Recreation staff, finalize implementation recommendations and budget, and finish up in the late spring, early summer of next year.
All right. So pretty comprehensive look. We have had, how many years ago is the old study? 10 years ago?
Yes, very close to that, yeah.
We had a study, and it did more of an inventory about, you know, for a city this size, you need X number of tennis courts, X number of pools, X number of fields. And I've been assured this will be a little more sophisticated than that, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, so while we are in this community engagement piece, we are also out in the parks. I was out there this morning, most of the day today as well. And we are taking inventory of all the amenities that are in the parks. We're looking at the parks themselves from a variety of different aspects, and we'll have a full report on that to establish a level of service throughout the community. So we'll be able to break it down by district, too, so you can, you'll have a level of service number. We can see who's doing better and be able to then establish, that was a joke.
We're not laughing. We're laughing.
But I know you're not, I know there's some competition, friendly competition there. But in the end, at a level of service, we'll be able to say, you know, we want our parks to look like this park. And it gives your community something that they can gauge, that they see and know within the community, you know? We want the rest of our parks to be able to look like this park. So yes, Mayor, it will be more comprehensive in that sense.
Thank you. Commissioner Kane.
Well, I hate to bring this up. You hate to point out you have the largest park in the whole system in your district. Well, if you can walk there, it'd be great.
Go ahead.
Just, just a thought here. I don't know if you guys are familiar, but west of 435, and if I say north of parallel, please don't get mad. We don't have any parks, but we have some property down there off of 5 Highway that Doug and I have talked about, that I would wish that you guys would take a serious look at, because it's big enough to make a small park with very little money. You know, it's in the floodplain, so I don't think we can stick any permanent structures down there. But we could stick a Johnny-on-the-spot and a small gazebo on wheels or something like that. But that would, just a suggestion that you would look west of 435. And maybe you could add, as the mayor would like, a bike trail. Maybe we could start working on the bike trail from out west going east, instead of east, going and stopping at 72nd Street, where the district starts.
I like it. Commissioner Markley.
You said you created a slightly different survey for we commissioners. Is there any reason we can't have a survey online with those questions that were asked of the residents that other residents can take? Because 48, although pretty good for a neighborhood turnout, is kind of a small sampling of our community as a whole.
And let me clarify that. It's not a citizen survey. There were focus groups with key stakeholders of the community, various organization groups. We did have some residents show up. We didn't turn anybody away, obviously. And these questions are broad stroke questions that we will be focusing them down as we go out into the community with more of a statistically valid survey, which RRC, one of our consultants, will be carrying out. So yes, we will take it. And when I say that this is different, it's only different in that the specific questions, it's the same questions. They're all the same. However, I rewarded one just to say, "In your district."
Commissioner McKernan.
So this is something I've already emailed and asked about, but I want to make sure that you're going to engage neighborhood groups in each of the districts, maybe getting the list through livable neighborhoods. Or I have several neighborhood groups that have expressed explicit interest in giving input into the park that is closest or is in their local area neighborhood. So I want to make sure, are you going to engage neighborhood groups as a part of this? And so you've got the list, or do we need to provide contact information for all those groups?
We have the list.
You have it. And you're going to engage the NBRs, the Neighborhood Business Revitalization Organizations, as well? Because a lot of them have already invested. So all of those are on the schedule? Perfect. Yes?
Mr. Bach.
I just want to clarify on your procedure. So the survey that you have that's designated for the commissioners, and then your timeline and meeting with the commissioners, what's that? And how, from then, or are you sending it out to them specifically for the survey? And then when are you meeting with them individually?
This survey that we're talking about. I will, we will email this tomorrow morning.
Okay. And then when will you start engaging?
And then we'll start scheduling as, as we get through the rest of these groups and discussions, we'll be scheduling times.
Are you going to schedule with them and then decide?
Districts.
A couple of weeks, months?
Probably in September, October.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I think Commissioner McKernan had already covered what was in my mind, as well as Commissioner Markley touched on it. The 48 seem like such a small sampling, but if you're going to engage the neighborhood groups and all the other groups that Commissioner McKernan mentioned, then I'm fine with that. There might be one other group. I get calls, questions, people imploring us to do XYZ at certain parks that they frequent. I would like to pass on the names of those individuals to you. Also, they may not be affiliated with a particular neighborhood group, but they are active users of the park. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Philbrook.
Hello, gentlemen. I've been to a couple of their, couple of their meetings, because I wanted to see what it was going to be like. And they, at both meetings, they had people that were very, very active in the parks and already their groups of people that would go in and do a lot of work in our parks, because they like to use the trails and that sort of thing. So they're already getting those folks engaged, and those folks are reaching out to other groups that they know of that are doing that. So I was really excited when I saw, when I saw those folks there to talk about what they think we need to do and how their groups can help us with, with our parks. Because they've done, there's one, one couple that has done an extensive study of all of our parks, as to what the attributes and negatives and all that kind of stuff and so. You have really, you've really touched some great people, but I, as the rest of the commissioners say, we'd like you to make sure that, that a lot of other people in the community get to. And I know that in District 8, they'll be there. They'll be there to talk to you. Thank you.
Commissioner Walker.
Jeremy, does this include, will this ministry study include the future, two things? One, the future placement of the park we've been working on for challenged special children? And also, will it address the, all right on my mind. But I'm, I'm assuming you're including both the, our park board, the appointed group that we appoint, and the Park Foundation as participants in this dialogue?
I'll answer that question first. Yes, Vario came and met with our park board last night. We had our monthly meeting. And so they were able to answer these same 13 questions. We went around the room, and they were able to give their input and then expand on a little bit more of what's in their area and the parks that they frequent. So yes, the park board, and then the Park Foundation will be another group that Vario will meet with at their next, they meet quarterly, so they'll be at their next meeting.
The other thing that I wanted to, will this take a look at land that we have that is, that has been accepted either by the Unified Government or the predecessor governments over the years? There was a time when if you had a piece of ground you didn't want, you donated it to the City of Kansas City, Kansas, and for a park. I've got, I'm not far from where I live, actually closer to Commissioner Markley, off of Miami. There is a dead end at the railroad property, and there is a huge area of land that is dedicated for park, I say dedicated, I'm not sure of the status. It, it's listed as unused parkland. It's probably never going to be used as parkland. Will this study embrace an examination of how much land we actually have that in some way is encumbered by the idea that someday in the future, it's going to be a park? That inventory of parkland and what, what we should do with it now, if we should do anything with it now? Yes? Okay? Thank you.
I think, yes, about accessibility playground.
Yes, I'll address that one. This particular plan won't address the location of that playground. Unlimited Play is doing a separate, I'm not involving the two. Yes, they've talked and they know about each other and they're communicating. However, we're leaving that up to the expertise of Unlimited Play.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Will this study look at all the parks in each district regardless of size and scope? There are some, I know in my district, I have some rather large ones, like City Park, but I also have some very small ones as well. So I wanted to know, will you look at all parks regardless of size and scope? And even in my driving around, looking at the parks, I realize I have a park in my district that seems to be, have been forgotten. And that leads me to another question is, will this study offer any thoughts regarding consolidation or repurposing of existing parks? Which tends to make me a little nervous, and I will tell you that, because I would like to see all of my parks being brought up to their, to their best and fullest capacity. But just wanted to see, get a general sense of the overall direction that you all are going in terms of the scope of this study.
That came up last night within the park board, was consolidation of parks. And anytime a park is consolidated or land is moved between entities, that would have to go before this board. This part, this plan will give suggestions as it relates, but it's suggestions based on community input. So as the community tells Vario and the Parks and Recreation Department what is wanted for their particular area, that will be noted within the plans. So just, if in that plan it does suggest for a consolidation of some sort, that would have to be sorted out. That doesn't necessarily mean that's going to be accomplished. That will, something that'll be sorted out among this group. Well, thank you.
I have a question and then two points. Will you also be evaluating operations of our parks? One, and I have two reasons for asking that. One, at consolidation, the park department was the largest, one of the largest departments that was kind of merged together during unification. So the Parks Board and the legacy, the three big signature parks in our community, and the 50, 49 or 50 city parks, plus the recreation program, were all kind of pushed together rather unceremoniously. And then we have gone through with the recession, just, the Parks Department has been cut more than any other department in terms of almost 25% cuts during the recession. So do you do any evaluation of the operations in terms of staffing levels that would be required to maintain this level of parking, this level of parks? Do you evaluate the, the kind of annual investment it would take to properly maintain our parks? Do you dig into the operations and suggested staffing levels of our parks?
We do, and we will.
You do all that as well?
Great.
Okay. My two statements are, and one, I want to, I think Commissioner Townsend talked about other groups that use our parks that aren't necessarily neighborhood groups. I would say there's a couple of baseball groups that use our parks that I think it would be helpful, like RBI and Mr. Tab's organization as well. Both use our parks extensively and getting feedback. I'd hope you'd get feedback from the organizations that count on our parks as well. And finally, I want to make sure that you have a conversation with the drainage districts. The drainage districts in our community hold the keys to dozens of miles of levy trails. And we're one of the only communities in the region. Manhattan, Topeka, Lawrence, Parkville, Riverview, Riverside, and Kansas City, Missouri all allow hike and bike on their levies. And only Kansas City, Kansas does not. And we've been working with our levy boards. We had a, the Caw Valley Levy District has opened a starter section, which has been great, in partnership with the Parks and Rec. We're working with Fairfax to try to get that area open. But in terms of already built trail, opening our, opening our levies is a high priority of mine. And I would hope you would have some conversation with the levy districts about how that, not if, but when those will be open to the public. And I'll just say, to repeat my often repeated mantra, these levies were all built with federal tax dollars. They belong to the people. We are not the owners of them. We are stewards of them. And we should have the right to hike and bike on our levies and will one day. So if you could engage that in your study, I would appreciate that as well. Keep hope alive. Commissioner Bynum?
The timing of the end report, the master plan, July of '17, is that in time for budget guidance for us for the 18-year? Will there be budget guidance for us as a result of the plan?
The plan will be adopted, but before the plan is adopted, I'll have a good idea of where we stand and what we're looking at. The formalities of adopting it, hopefully there won't be too many changes to be made. But I'll have a good idea in order to make those requests prior to the actual adoption. And I'll make those requests assuming it's being adopted.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions or comments about the plan? The next step, and this is, I'm, I'll be sending an email out to the commission shortly, asking for your input on topics for our strategic planning time. But one of them is certainly going to be, how do we take all the studies we're doing? Because we're doing all kinds of studies. And making sure we have an implementation strategy for each of them to make sure that they get, that as we study it, we also move forward with implementation. And certainly, the Parks one is going to be important, even though we're several months out from getting the final product, making sure we have an implementation plan. Because the last thing I want is a study that sits on a shelf and doesn't, isn't implemented for the benefit of our community. So, all right. I think that covers Parks and Rec. Thank you all very much. We appreciate your work on this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Bach?
All right. The next item is the public. All right, the next item is the Public Safety Study. This was one that we were directed to do, it's really been held back somewhat from a timeframe for what we originally, I think we were hoping to get into this last year, however, with all the other studies that were being done, and really effectively, as the mayor said, and for us to be thorough in the studies we were doing, and then be able to move into some type of implementation plan with each one, we had to put them in more of a practical order. This is one that's to study all of law enforcement, it wasn't just police, it was supposed to study sheriff, and then cross over things that happened between these units. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa Munt and Gordon Chriswell, who both interact with both these departments, to provide an update of where we are with this process as we start.
Thank you, Doug, Mayor and Commissioner. The Matrix Consulting Group was one of, well, it was the company that was selected by the review team. I believe we had more than five RFPs that were reviewed, and the selection committee selected this group. A couple of highlights on this slide that I'd like to point out, the Matrix Group has completed over 300 law enforcement studies around the country and internationally. This project team is composed of public safety analysts and former police chiefs, and the last highlight on this slide is, their approach is fact-based, utilizing extensive data collection, which you will see through the study. Next slide.
So, the RFP took a lot of time and development to ensure that the study objectives that are following would be able to be sought out by the consultant. So, we're looking at level of service and how our citizens feel about that, so they'll be meeting with folks in the community, they'll be looking at how we staff, deploy, and schedule both our police and sheriff's functions, and looking at best practices and how we're employing them, or if we're not employing them, what we might benefit from employing other practices, ensuring that we have efficient operations management from the police and sheriff's personnel, and then also looking how we're using the data that we're collecting in our systems and through this process to best utilize staff to serve the community. And then lastly, the last component is to look at where services are possibly duplicated, and how they could be addressed or coordinated better for the community as a whole. So, that's a big one for us as well.
Next slide, please. This is really the meat of the study, this is what I call the how, this is how the consultants will go about conducting their analysis. The RFP basically states that the consultants have 90 days from the time that we initiate the 16 weeks to complete the study. So, although we got started a little late, they are on the ground now, they have initiated some of the discussions with both the police department and the sheriff's office with their face-to-face interviews, and they are seeking the input from the external stakeholders. They have started working on the analysis of the workloads, the service levels, all of that information, they've requested from the two departments, and will be putting that together and analyzing it, and just moving down the line with their methodology of doing a good analysis of our operations between the two departments.
So, the next part is sort of how they intend to move through what Gordon was talking about from a methodological standpoint. They were onsite last week for initial interviews, and kind of a project kickoff, met with our staff in our office, and then as well as police and sheriff staff, including command staff. The next phase is they'll be doing employee input, so talking to staff, there's also a survey that will be included, that will go out to every employee in both departments. They're also going to basically create a descriptive profile for us, a better kind of written understanding of all of our operations for us to look at and for folks in the future to use. Of course, we mentioned the best practice assessments, and also the organizational analysis, so looking at how we're structured and our spans of control, just as a couple of the ways that they'll be trying to better, provide us a better understanding of how we're doing. This is going to take 16 weeks, and you can see that some of these steps will take longer than others, they don't have that broken out for us, but that's where we're at right now, is we're starting into step two.
So, the project schedule here sort of takes 16 weeks and plots out what will happen in each of the phases that Melissa just articulated. I would call your attention to, actually, week number 11. Week number 11, the consultants will provide you all with their draft, study findings and recommendations. You will get a chance then to see the study, review it, ask them questions when they are here, and make any changes or recommendations before they offer up the final, the final study and the final recommendations.
So, the last area that we want to cover is the role of a project committee that's being developed as part of this. Right now, I believe the mayor's office has asked for folks that you would be interested in serving on this, and if they haven't, they will be. This will include staff as well as community representatives, and it'll help us work through some of the, probably the sticking points as we look at our organization's structures and how they're functioning to develop solutions for the community. And then, while they're doing that, they'll also help us establish a process to check in with them to move forward implementation after, much like we did with the fire study. So, that is all we have on this. If you have any questions, happy to answer them, and I believe we have representatives here from the police department.
Commissioner Johnson.
I just want to repeat what I've said even in times with the fire department. It is my hope and my opinion that, as it relates to staffing and management, that we would incorporate diversity measures into those elements that really took to our policies and our best practices. I think we, again, are such a diverse community that all of our important departments, such as public safety in particular, need to reflect the community, and not only just in staffing, but also as we look at procedures for management and things, and placement of that, of those, of that nature as well. So, I want to continue to harp on this, it's vitally important, I don't think we need to overlook this.
And Commissioner Johnson, just to speak to what you just stated, we have actually provided them with a copy of the DOJ Joint Task Force Recommendations, and so they are aware of those, and then, of course, as we get out and meet with the different community groups, they've been made aware that that is something that we're really keenly focusing on this community, to make sure that we move forward with a bright and vibrant community.
Commissioner Walker.
I agree with Commissioner Johnson, I have a different, not a different, a supplemental take on this, that I would tell you to get the Human Relations Commission involved in this process of this study, but we don't have a Human Relations Commission, which I find deplorable. In fact, I find it beyond deplorable. It hasn't met in, what, last time I talked to you, Gordon, it hadn't met in eight months.
That's correct.
And I'm assuming since then, it hasn't met.
That is also correct.
This is disgraceful. In a city our size, as diverse as we are, I mean, there should be a active citizen participation already available to be involved in this, this kind of study and every other study. And in the end, I don't care what, how many, the fingers are all going to point back at all of us, and they're going to say, why didn't you do something about it? Why aren't we doing something about it? They have a role to play in almost every city in this country, sometimes positive, sometimes neutral, but at least there is a source of community input and involvement. And I think we're to blame, we're responsible, and there's plenty of people out there willing to serve on a committee, and I know we have this dialogue going on about what committees are useful for, and which ones we should keep and which ones we shouldn't, but a Human Relations Commission in a city our size is one that I think has a viable purpose and could be viable in being an asset to this. And I'll just say it and keep saying it until somebody listens, it's disgraceful that nobody is doing anything about getting this commission reignited. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or feedback at this time? This study is just getting underway, and what's, 16 weeks, when does that completion time?
We're looking at the middle of November that this will wrap up.
Okay. And that will be timely, in that we start our budgeting right after that. So, we will have plenty of time to incorporate into our budget any, what to do with the savings we find, and how to spend it, right, chief? So, let me just point out, so far, we've not done a study that showed savings, they've shown us how to spend additional money. The jail study's at about $20 million, the fire study's a lot, and so, but at the same time, we're also finding about, we spend 60 percent of our money, of the taxpayers' dollars on public safety, they are our most important priority, and making sure we're doing them right is key. So, I appreciate this study being underway, and we will keep the commission posted. That concludes our special session for tonight. We will reconvene downstairs at 7:00 in the commission chamber. Thank you.